The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners and businesses just like you. Michelle Parnell has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience when combined with her real estate expertise makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their whole buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard to find small batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gongier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@iliadgrow.com. Larissy and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest own Brian Larissy specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Burning the people love us on Yelp award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review and file. For a free quote, visit LarissyCPA.com now. That's L A R I S E Y C P A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. Relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical piers and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa, call it 224-768-8028 or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd just like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Otto, John C., Helen, Eric and J M.
What's up?
Oh, you got the right hat on.
My scouts gear.
Yeah. Warren, that's a big win. Talk to me.
Big win, man. First time in I think 10 or 11 years. I've got my hat here. I never, I never do well with hats, but I don't have a good hat headed for hats like you. I'll take it up, but this is a new hat, by the way. Got this jacket at school.
So talk to me 30 something to seven? Holy crap.
Yeah, it was, oh man, that's a game, um, it's one of those games that these kids are going to be talking about at their 30 year high school reunion.
If they go.
I think they'll go, but this is one, this is one of the, I mean, it was a crazy game. I urge everyone to get all the details in John Kerr's Scouts report that he does there. What is it on Substack or wherever he posts that stuff, but.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta pay up.
Well, there's some, he has some free content, so even if you don't do the full subscription.
Well, I'm just saying, pay up. I'm not saying not to.
Yeah, no, no, no. I mean, look, the man's got to earn a living, right? So, you know.
I don't.
Well, maybe we should start charging for content.
Whoa.
I want in on that if you start.
So the defense looked pretty damn.
Oh, the defense looked terrific. The O line came through. Um, I'd start naming names, but I'll forget some kid and, and hear about it through.
That's okay. We can have their parents come out and direct us.
But these, these guys really, um, you know, I mean, uh, um, uh, what's the school's name now? Warren, Warren, like I said, they haven't beaten Warren in 10 years, over 10 years and Warren.
That was a beat down.
This was a beat down, man, and they could have easily, you know, it started off kind of slow and they, uh, the coach went, Spagnoli went for it on fourth and goal and they didn't get in, so they turned over on downs. And you thought that could have been a real momentum killer, but nope, those guys fought right back, got the ball back, scored and, um, um, Warren even changed their quarterback later in the game. So that's to try and mix it up and they got some points, they finally got some points because for a while we thought it might be a shutout. But they finally did get some points, um, but the weird part of the game, I don't know if you heard about this, but.
No.
Uh, right as the fourth quarter is about to start, one of the light towers goes out on the south end by the. Near the concession stand, maybe Jeff was, uh, maybe Jeff's grill overloaded the circuits down there. I don't know from, uh, from Duffers, but cooking up those hot dogs. But, uh, yeah, the light tower went out, so they had to stop. They couldn't start the fourth quarter. They had to wait because the whole, now I'm kind of like, why don't they just go to the other end of the field and play down there? I mean, at this point they're leading by I think like 20. So it's like, we know we're probably going to win this game barring a miracle comeback.
I think Warren did it. Somebody was out there with.
Well, apparently this happened a couple of years ago at Warren. And so this was, Kerr wrote, Kerr wrote a good, he did his, he did his research or he remembers it from covering it. Uh, Kerr, um, wrote about, I guess they had a game where it got delayed due to rain. And they ended up finishing it the next day and Lake Forest was ready to say, okay, we'll come back the next day and finish this. But the problem was a lot of, I guess it was a SAT test the next day or ACT test that a lot of the guys were taking, uh, that day. So that would have been a huge, huge problem, um, for them. But thankfully, I don't know, they got Sparky, the electrician out there and he got it up and running. And you know how those lights, they just gradually turn on, you know, a little bit at a time. So the first one starts to come on and all the guys on the team were like, ah, they're raising their helmets. And then the next one comes on. So like I said, this is the game these guys are going to remember for the rest of their lives. So God bless them. Go Scouts. They're playing up in Zion Benton against the ZBs this weekend. Of course, we, we post this after it's over and then next weekend's homecoming. So, uh.
I've heard nothing but glowing reviews on the ZBs.
The town, the town is glowing. Thank you, comment.
They still have that reactor up there?
I think it's been deactivated.
De-nuked?
De-nuked, but you know, it's kind of like Chernobyl. You really want to, I don't know, I'm going to be there Friday night, man. So I hope, hope I don't come back, uh, going in the dark.
Well, if your, your hair is standing on end, you'll know.
I'll, I'll just put this, I'll be wearing this as well as a hazmat suit that's, that's decked out with the Lake Forest logo.
If you hear the Simpsons theme, get out of there.
Go Scouts, man. Great job by the guys. They, I mean, every position came through offense, defense.
How, how did Scoo do?
Scoo, Scoo was sitting up there. I actually went up and, and chatted with him during this, this intermission of the lights. I'm like, why don't they just go down to the other side of the field? He's like.
It's not his job.
He got him an extra bathroom break, I think, but you know, he.
He cherishes those. He's, he's got a little rope that he's.
Maybe, what was your, what was your uniform number when you played?
62, 79, 78.
You went around, huh?
Yeah.
I was going to say, we could have Scoo record a call where you make a big, because you were an O lineman, right? So, uh.
I played, I played both ways, my friend, both ways.
Okay, what about football?
Oh.
Sorry, sorry.
Neither, neither one was.
You set that up yourself.
I did. I'm, I'm sure.
Maybe you could have, we could have Scoo record a call where you make like a, a sack or something, you know, uh.
No, he'll go check that. So, so we had a city council meeting last week.
Yeah, we did. Uh, I was, I, uh, made it there, had a, uh, sat in the back there and, um, chalk a big agenda. I mean, I don't know where to start. Did you?
Start with Northrop, Northrop, uh.
Yeah, which I ironically, uh, was at a little party the other night at, uh, at Northrop. So they're, that, they're really going to transform that park. Uh, the new parks and rec director, uh, I think he's, he's got it together there. He, um, gave a really nice presentation and you know, again, when, when Lake Forest does all this stuff, they're able to do it within budget. So we still keep the taxes, um, low, lowest property taxes, municipal property taxes in the county. But, um, we're going to get disc golf. First disc, do you know what disc golf is?
Yeah, yeah, I do. And they're going to spend a lot of money getting that thorn brush out of there for disc golf. You know, we're doing all these park improvements and I just got a, just quick question out there. Why don't they put a damn public swimming pool in town?
You know, well, we do have a big one. It's called Lake Michigan, but, um.
No, but.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, no, I've thought about that too, that I guess we have rights to use the Lake Bluff one, that there's some intergovernment.
I don't want to use Lake Bluff. They pee in the pool up there.
But yeah, no, I've often wondered that. And hey, you know, you got to do parks.
You know what that pool, you know what the Lake Bluff, uh, pool is filled with? Liberal tears.
Oh, we've got to get the French mayor on. Mary, maybe trustee Cole can help us before she becomes state's attorney Cole. Get us the, uh, mayor of Lake, the French mayor of Lake Bluff.
Um, but it would.
Here, whatever his name is.
You know, we.
He should first thank America for D-Day, but that's another story.
But I mean, a public pool, maybe, you know, the, the liability is too high or whatever.
Well, they are, I mean, first, the maintenance is expensive, right? I mean, that's why most of us.
Isn't.
Don't have a pool, you know, unless you're Uber rich.
Why we need a pool.
Right, but the maintenance is high. I, um, I.
The liability.
Are you talking about an outdoor or an indoor?
Outdoor.
Okay, outdoor, because the indoor ones are even more expensive, but, but you know, I would think an indoor one would be, you know, be nice to be able to go. My kids had one when they were growing up in, um, Landview, they had an indoor and two outdoor pools. And of course we had a huge property tax bill as a result of it, so, um, they actually had a referendum to do all that.
In fact, how about an outdoor and an indoor?
Kind of like the, that was, those resorts up in.
Like an infinity pool for outside by the lake and.
What's the, uh, there's those pools, what's the, what's the place up in Gurnee, the splashy?
I don't go.
You know, those water parks, we used to take the kids there when they were little and the pool would be inside and outside. Like you could, and on the night they'd close off the outside windows, kind of like Duffer's closes the windows. But yeah, I mean, the, the, the park center, the Parks and Recs center, I think is going to be, is on a future list of things they want to redo. I mean, Scoo talked about it when he was on the show saying it needs to get an upgrade. So maybe a pool is part of that upgrade.
I, I don't know. We did a, we did a poll a while back and everybody wants it. I just don't hear anybody bringing it up. I wonder what, what needs to happen to.
I want police station before I want a pool, but that's, yeah.
So. Hold on, while they're fixing up Northbrook, North.
Yeah, well, I think that was scheduled a while ago. They had been doing a whole bunch of, they did surveys and it, you can't do everything at once because towns that do everything at once have high taxes.
I'm not saying to do it all at once, Joe, but if you can fix up Northbrook Park and you can put frisbee golf out there.
Disc golf.
Whatever.
Is, is, is this, what is this golf? Have you played this golf?
It's, it's called a D-bag indicator.
Oh, no. But it's like frisbee? Is it just a frisbee thing or what is it?
You throw a frisbee into a chain, uh, thing that catches it.
Do that in my backyard.
Okay. I'm just saying.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe there's a need for it. Maybe it came up in surveys, but I don't know. But yeah, I agree. I think I, I, it'd be nice to have a pool here. Uh, you would certainly be there for the grand opening in your, in your, uh.
I would.
Your Lake Forest Podcast Speedo.
I would not suggest doing one of those pool bars.
Why?
That is the grossest thing. You never see those people leave.
You're talking about the bars at the pool with the stools underwater and stuff?
It's what I said, yeah.
I've been at those in, uh, some resorts. Um, I don't know, you're, you're drinking, so you don't really, I don't think they're going to do that on, on public property. But yeah, you're right.
Well, I mean.
Got the youngsters swimming there.
You would use it and, uh, if you can charge people for the beach, you can charge people for the pool and.
You have to pay, yeah.
A nice infinity pool looking at Lake Michigan in there. I think that'd be a cool thing. I did get a, uh, a look at that walkway over by the lake. That is a, that's a long walkway.
You can bring your, your, your motorized scooter to do it or a trailer for your beer?
I gotta talk to those, um, Shriners, see if I can borrow one of their motorized coolers. If any Lake Forest Shriners want to let me borrow their cooler next year.
Fellas, I got some good Bud Light.
Bud Light? Yeah, you're a Bud Light guy. So.
I hate it. Look, I, I could care less who they put in their ads, but.
Yeah.
You're going to, I said this 20 years ago, cause I, uh, I've been drinking way legally, way more than 20 years. Um, if you're going to order a Bud Light, you might as well just order a bottle of water because it's the most watered down roast beer around.
Getting back to that walkway, that is a big switchback. You know, it's not like, uh, if you ever been to, uh, climbing the Grand Canyon, the switchbacks are a little bit shorter. So you zigzagging down, this is a big, thank goodness they put those little step outs where you can take a breather, but.
All those little benches or whatever? Yeah.
Um, but no, I saw it, uh, took, uh, took a niece over there for senior pictures, you know, took the camera out and I saw it and it, it looks nice. It looks really nice. Uh, it's, uh, it's way off to the other side of the stairs. Uh, it just looked really big. It looked really big. What do I know?
So, uh, yeah, we'll see the Lake Forest Podcast Beer Cag there, right?
Uh, we, we, we could do that. We could do that. Um, cell towers came up. You see that?
Yes, I did. And I am more the merrier.
Yeah, how was?
One in my backyard. I don't care.
How, how is coverage on the west side?
Bad. Bad. I have dropped calls every day. I mean, you've talked to me on my phone and how it sucks. I mean, um.
I've done shows with you in your life.
Yeah. Well, that's, 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 uh, Comcast or Xfinity, whatever they're called now. That's a, that's a separate story, but.
Yeah.
Um, that's the wires under the ground apparently aren't that good. So if the wires aren't that good, imagine the wireless. But yeah, no, the problem, here's the thing, what everyone wants good cell service, but no one wants a cell phone tower near their house. That's the problem right there. It's the whole NIMBY thing. Like, oh no, they're good. First of all, the whole thing that they're bad for your health has been disputed. That's not true.
It does a little something to the, to the noggin, just saying. You, you, you don't want to be that, that close.
You hold, you sleep at night with your cell phone on your forehead? Um, but no, I, it, it's, is, is it any different than the electricity going through your house or all the other stuff?
Actually it is. Yes, it is.
All right, Dr. Jansen.
Well, you got, you got 60 hertz up on the, let's just say a light.
All right, we won't put one by your house and your cell service will still suck, but, um, it just, it, it, you, you, until they get a technology that you don't need all these towers and maybe one day that'll happen. Um, there needs to be more, and I think the, basically this created, this didn't allow for a specific tower anywhere. This was, that nobody came to them and said, hey, we want to build a tower at this place. This just changes the rules about it, which were written back in 1998, which is, you might as well, I mean, think about how much cell phone.
Almost 30 years.
This has changed since 1998. I mean, back then, you know, you had your little flip phone and I don't even know if they had the flip phones.
I was selling Nextel back then, a little push to talk.
Oh, yeah. I mean, as, as Mayor Tack very eloquently said in his comments, it's self, it's, it's, it's not just a luxury anymore. It's a lifeline. I mean, it, emergency services need this stuff for calls.
No, I get it, but how are you going to get people to agree on what it looks like?
Well, look, anytime a tower does come in, when a company says, hey, we want to build a tower at such and such place, there'll be public hearings on it. And it goes through the whole process with all the commissions and all that.
I get it, but you, you have companies out there that make them look like palm trees and like, what are they going to do? You can't have regular antenna. The.
Well, I think the one, the one suggestion they had was putting it in the parking lot at the Metro Station on the west side. Though the, uh, Milwaukee District North Station over by Telegraph Road.
I thought I heard also.
It seems like a natural place to me because that parking lot's never full anymore because so many people work at home. And I've seen cell towers in other metro parking lots when I'm riding the train up and down. So I don't think that's, uh, an unprecedented idea and I think you can work that out. And I've seen some of them landscape pretty nice in other towns. So, um, you know, I, I, I think, look, if people want cell phones and want to have good cell phone coverage, there has to be a trade-off. So people are going to have to.
If you can't get an agreement from the hysterical society and all those, you know.
They want us all to, to use, uh.
Alexander Graham Bell.
Here your pigeons.
Watson. Watson.
Please put me through to the Lake Forest Podcast operator.
One second, please. Click. All right. So we got cell towers, you know, coming in and I can't wait till all the opposition groups, uh, uh, come in.
The NIMBYs?
Yeah.
The NIMBY crowd, not in my backyard.
Thank goodness we got the Lake Forest Scouts because the Bears.
Well, still got my hat back here, but yeah. Well, they need you to get, you need to get in your Tesla and head over to Halas Hall and work with that offensive line, Mr. Former offensive lineman. Uh, that, that O line was embarrassing.
Hold on, the offensive coordinator, if you know your offensive line is bad, how can you have nobody back? All you have is one running back back there who's Deandre Swift, who stinks. Khalil Herbert is going to take his job, but you have nobody back there and you got Caleb crapping his pants again. Cause he doesn't get nervous.
Look, look, Justin Fields went to Pittsburgh and he won the game. I mean, it was, it wasn't a blowout or anything, but they want, the Steelers won with, uh, Justin Fields as their quarterback. And I've always said Mike Tomlin's a great coach and I knew that if Justin Fields got to play at Pittsburgh with, under Mike Tomlin, he would do well and he has because Tomlin's a, a, a great coach. So, but yeah, I mean, back to Caleb and the Bears, it just seems like we're wasting another quarterback talent here with not, with bad, bad play design, like you just said, a bad O line. And I know these things don't happen overnight. I mean.
I'm not asking, I'm talking about common sense.
Yeah, well, that's why you need to get in a Tesla and head over there and offer your services to the monsters of the midway.
You know what? They can call me up. How's that? Call me up, come on.
Ryan Pauls, Pete at lakeforestpodcast.com.
You know who I'd like to speak to, Joe, is they got a female running backs coach. I would like to have her come on the show. That'd be kind of interesting.
Get to the Bears media coordinator and.
Oh, I'm sure they're watching and listening to this show, but, uh, no, it's just, uh.
My son saw Ryan Pauls, uh, last summer, uh, somewhere. I can't remember where.
Happy for you both. He's, he's probably happiest of all, but they're bad. They're, you just, you're bad. It's just bad. You got, you can, you can play the game on Hard Knocks for three weeks and then eventually you got to come out and you got to play.
What's the record of, what is there? Has anyone figured out what the record is of teams that have been on Hard Knocks that season?
Yeah, they're all crappy teams that go on there because nobody wants to get that.
I saw the, did you see the 30, you know, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, the Baltimore Ravens were the first team and they just did a 30 for 30.
Yeah.
On that Ravens team and, uh, part of it was Hard Knocks episode.
Brian Billick, yes. Like we talked about on the last show. So the Bears, I don't know, all the people that were saying, oh, you know, they look good. Uh, Caleb did his little college thing, uh, where he runs around the field and makes his own, his own play.
Well, Charlie Little had the best comment in one of the halftime shows, this ain't the Pac 12. Of course, the Pac 12 ain't the Pac 12 anymore, but that's another conversation. But yeah, I mean, he's got, how many Heisman quarterback, Heisman Trophy winning quarterbacks come into the NFL and fall flat on their, uh, you know what?
Well, there is something to say where they, they need to. Bajent is better than Caleb. He is mentally. And I don't think right now you're going to, this kid's head is, they just benched the kid in, uh, Charlotte. He was, uh, the number one quarterback. And I got to give credit to the Bears because if you could see all the stuff that they got for that pick, uh, the Bears could have had that guy. Uh, well, what's his name? He got, he just got benched and, uh, the Bears got a, a boatload. So to give credit for the Bears for that, but they, I'd give them no credit for common sense that they're putting out a scheme that just with the, with the personnel that they have and the offensive line that they have, it just, it don't worky, no worky.
Yeah. I mean, we gotta, I think we gotta, we gotta get over there. We gotta, I, we gotta get over to Halas Hall and do some emergency work with them.
Over there.
Over by there. It is over by there actually, but, um, I can hear them practicing. I can hear they play music and stuff, which I have no problem with. Some of the neighbors don't like the music. I'm like, if, if they can practice outside with music 24/7 for all I care.
They gotta, they gotta have common sense to be able to listen to music. They should be paying attention to what they got going on. Uh, funny, not a funny thing, but you hear all these people that say that, uh, Donald Trump is a threat to society. I think, isn't he like, isn't society a threat to Trump? Because how many times are people going to try to kill the dude?
Well, it just happened again, uh, this past weekend over in, uh, Mar-a-Lago. Now, my first reaction, being the campaign strategist kind of guy that I am, is what the hell is he doing on the weekend before the, after Labor Day, before an election, playing golf in Florida instead of campaigning in a swing state? That said, um, something's, something's going on here. I mean, which I was surprised, quite honestly, I was.
Are you saying that Trump said, uh, he said, hey, go out there and try and shoot me? Is that what you're saying?
No, he did not say that, of course not. Um, but I, I think, you know, and they keep saying, well, the president gets more security than a presidential candidate because they got the nuclear football. But that said, I, they've got to ramp it up. Thank God that Secret Service agent saw the rifle pointing through the bushes. I don't know what that exactly looked like, if it was obvious, or if he had just had a real sharp eye or what, but that could have paid horrible disaster there.
They got to pay those guys more and so they can, uh, they, they are notorious for being, uh, they like to party all the time.
Well, the agents that are right there on the ground with, um, Trump are.
All hungover.
No, no, the ones that are right with him, he likes them. He's, he's praised them. His son has praised them. Those are the good guys. I think it's the upper, it's the upper management, just like a lot of organizations, the upper management at the Secret Service. Well, they got rid of that one director, but this other guy, he seems like a clown too, but, um, they need, something needs to be done there because the, I don't care who you're voting for, but.
Yeah, you do. You hear that very call? Joe White doesn't care who you vote for.
I don't care for president, who you vote for and how I know, because it don't matter. But my point is whoever you're voting for, I don't want to see anybody, any candidates, any people in, uh, the stands. The biggest tragedy to that one in Pennsylvania was that, uh, father getting killed, his family. I mean, that's horrible. Um, no one should go to a political rally like that, uh, and, and, and get killed. I mean, especially with their family right there. I mean, that's just as awful as it gets, but, um, something needs to happen here. Um, and I don't know what it is. I'm not, you know, I've worked with the Secret Service a little bit back in the day on some, uh, when Dole came back in the day and George W., but, um, and they were always pros. I mean, they, they would look out for, like that whole thing with the building in Pennsylvania. We did an event with Dole in Wheaton and they had every building covered with somebody. So I can't believe.
They got a bad rep of, of partying. They just do, going back to Kennedy.
Well, the, the dude that spotted that scope, man, he had his A-game that day, right? Props to him.
There's outliers everywhere, but I, I, they don't get.
And the ones that rushed up to Trump on the podium, they did their job and that sharp.
Wait, hold on, like the DEI lady that couldn't.
Oh, stop. He praised her.
Stop.
Trump praised her. So don't, don't go, don't go on that DEI.
What? Oh, oh, really? She couldn't fight? She, she looked like Caleb Williams.
Dude, she'd be more, she was big enough to take a bullet better than some of the other agents. I mean.
Don't go there, Joe. I didn't even go there. What I'm saying.
But I mean, seriously, these, you don't just suddenly.
Couldn't get her gun out.
First of all.
It was okay, Corral, dead.
I, 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 a guy I went to high school with later became a Secret Service agent. And if you, to make it to the presidential. I, 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 a guy I went to high school with later became a Secret Service agent. And if, to make it to the presidential detail, because most, you, you know what the real main purpose of the Secret Service is? It's not.
Money, currency.
Currency, right. If you remember, what was that movie back in the eighties where they, the Secret Service agents were all, um, to live and die in LA? Um, they, um, so their main job is currency. So most Secret Service agents, that's what they end up working on is currency fraud. Um, so to get to the presidential detail and the protect, protective detail for like vice president and the, and the candidates and stuff, that is, um, you don't just suddenly show up there. So I, I don't, I don't buy that whole business that that was a token hire or anything like that. I, I don't, I don't buy that for that. But if you, you feel differently, that's fine, but I.
I would want somebody that, if somebody's going to give shield their body to protect me, I want somebody at least as big as me.
Well, then all the agents would be.
Well, I, okay, great. Put somebody on somebody's shoulders.
Yeah, but then it'd be huffing and puffing when they had to run down somebody.
Or at least somebody that can get the gun out.
How about those license plate readers?
I want somebody that can.
Readers caught the guy. Everybody, we have those license plate readers here. What do you, I, I forgot the, the company's called, but we've got them all over town here. Our subdivision has one. People don't like them, but those license plate readers caught the dude, um, when he was driving away. And I still, that, I don't know what hap, what's the story with that guy? I mean, I'm sure we'll hopefully hear more about it. I don't know. Something fishy there too. How did they know? How did he know he was golfing? Cause supposedly it wasn't on his public schedule that he was in Mar-a-Lago or golfing. So how did he know that?
Spo, that guy was out there like 10 hours. Yeah, 10 hours, 12, 12 hours, something like that. Um, it just makes you.
Yeah, no, I mean, fool me once, uh, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me, right? So I think, I think something is more.
That's the only difference between nineteen sixty.
I was amazed that while he was president.
They had better shooters in sixty-eight.
But I, now we have better Secret Service now in sixty-eight and they don't, they don't do some of the stuff. Look, you would not have a president ride in an open convertible like JFK did in sixty-three. That just doesn't happen anymore. Right? Because of what happened in Dallas in sixty-three. Bobby Kennedy, um, the whole thing with going through that kitchen and all that, they don't do that stuff anymore now. Um, but they, um, the, the, the thing is though, like, they're going to have to, they're, they're going to have to figure out, they're going to have to give him the same level of protection they give the guy with the football because he used to have the football. So it's a little different than, uh, your typical presidential candidate. And unfortunately, I'm surprised that when he was president, no one took a shot at him. I said, I, I've said this to a lot of people. Well, that's true. The Secret Service does stop a lot of things and you only hear about the things they don't stop, but we never saw an incident where someone took a shot. I mean, no one's shot at a sitting president since, uh, Reagan in eighty-one. So, uh, with Hinkley and because of that incident, they don't, they don't, uh, now the, the president goes into the building in the limo and then they take him out inside the building as opposed to pulling the limo outside. He walks on a sidewalk.
But don't eat, don't forget Gerald Ford.
Well, that was in the seventies.
Well, that chick. So what? It's still a.
I'm just saying that was before the Reagan shooting and Ford never got hit. He just got, they, she shot in the air and it didn't hit him. It hit Reagan and, and effectively killed James Brady. I mean, the poor guy, but, um, the, um, you know, I mean, they, they learn from these, these incidents you learn from, right? It's just like after nine eleven.
What are we learning? What are we learning?
You don't put the president in an open car. I, I guarantee you, he's.
What are we learning with Trump?
Anywhere close to an open rooftop again because of what happened. Um, but now, I don't know, the golfing thing, how do you protect the whole golf course when the president or the former president is golfing? I don't know how you do, you know, eighteen holes? Do you, what, what happens when a sitting president golfs? Do they, or do they, I mean, I don't think Biden golfs because he, he, maybe he'll play the disc golf at North, uh, at the park when we build it, but, um.
Maybe we'll put pickleball out there.
I'd be worried about him getting hurt in pickleball. He's a little frail right now, but, um, the, um, I, I just, I don't know how you protect eighteen holes of a golf course. I, I, maybe they, I'm sure they do because sitting presidents do play golf, right?
I don't think it says.
Obama played golf. Bush played golf?
Hold on, you got the drones up there. There should be nothing but drones circling around looking for heat signatures.
How do you know then that there's a drone there that's not your drone?
Because it's a Secret Service drone that blows away all the other drones.
How do they know whose drone is which? I, I don't know. I'm just, I, I don't know. Maybe they do. I.
Cause you have a drone master.
He probably should have a drone. He probably should have a drone, yes. Um, they should have a lot of things and.
Well, I'm just saying if Trump, Trump is a menace to society, I think society is.
He's not a menace. Look, I am not the biggest fan of him. That said, and I, I know people that think he's the second coming of Jesus. I know people that think he's the second coming of Hitler.
The brand.
Is neither is the case. I have seen Facebook posts of people comparing Trump to Hitler.
Oh, Facebook posts.
Facebook posts of people comparing Trump to Jesus. Neither is true. Okay. He's, he's a guy.
Jesus or Jesus?
What? No, Jesus.
Okay.
Our Lord and Savior, Jesus. And he's neither. He's not Hitler and he's not Jesus. Okay. He's a guy with an agenda, just like every other politician running for office has an agenda. And he says things differently than some, he does some things I agree with, does some things I don't agree with, but.
Let me just pull it back in. Let me, can I, can I pull it back into Lake Forest? Anything new on, uh, the schools in Montgomery and that letter that went out?
Good question. You know, I ran into Dr., I finally met Dr. Montgomery in person last week at in house at the high school. He was out in the greeting line with, uh, 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 Dr. Leonard, the principal and some of the other admins.
Did he have one of those vests on?
Uh, he, he had a, a nice suit on, but very, very, he's always very sharply dressed. Um, and he recognized me instantaneously. It said, glad to finally meet you in person. And I said likewise, and we just, I didn't think it was the play, that email had just come out that day or the day before. I can't remember exactly now, but.
But have you heard anything since then?
Uh, I know parents care sent out an email, I think it was either yesterday or this morning, we do this.
Do tell. Anything? Gotcha.
They didn't, they said they're trying to get clarification. So I,
Okay.
I don't know why, I wish I could have taken him aside and asked him. I, like I said, I didn't think that was the proper place there because there were other parents waiting to say hello to him. Um, but, um, he, um, I, in my opinion, the email he sent out created more questions than answers. I had no idea any of this had happened.
See, he's damned if he does and damned if he doesn't.
I understand that, but there's a way, but if you're going to communicate, if you're going to be a bear, be a grizzly bear. If you're going to come out and say something that most people don't know anything about, tell us something about it. Don't say we're aware of this and we're looking into it.
But hold on, it was, this was a parents meeting and the parent went up and said, hey, I'm concerned about my kid. What? That doesn't sound right.
Apparently.
Does that sound right? Do you wait for a parents group meeting to?
I mean, there are parents groups meetings. I don't know where, what, we still don't know what school it was.
Something happened to your kid, Joe. Are you going to wait till this parents meeting where you're concerned? Or are you going to?
Absolutely not. But, but then if there is a parents meeting and it hasn't been addressed, I might bring it up at the parents meeting still. I said, hey, as I, as I said to you in my twenty-eight emails, I don't know. I, I don't know what happened. I'd like to get some clarity. Maybe next week, Dr. Montgomery will be gracious enough to come back on and, and explain it.
Well, well, could you reach out to him and see if he's got anything on it? Cause I, you know, don't want him to come on.
Buddy. Now you guys go, you guys go swimming together at the.
You saw him last.
I saw him last for, uh, sixty seconds.
There you go. Perfect.
He's a nice guy personally. Like I said, it, uh, you know, I agree with him on some stuff and don't on others, but.
He's the nicest guy that's ever taken a thousand bucks out of my pocket. Uh, last thing on the list, uh, getting back to the city council meeting, the, uh, police station.
Yep.
They had all those bids.
Yeah, they did. They're, they're not really bids. They're RFPs. There's a little bit of difference between.
Request for proposals. So they give.
I'm sorry. Yes. You don't like acronyms with.
I propose to do this job.
Right. So their proposal bids you, by law, you must take the lowest bidder. RFPs, you take what you think is the best proposal. And there's a difference, you know, lowest bidder isn't always the best. So now if you're buying staples or, you know, uh, uh, new cars or something, you probably go, okay, it's okay to go with the lowest bidder, but um, something like this, they went with about the middle. They had a, a nice chart up on the wall.
Million five.
Yeah. So they had it. They were right in the middle of the bids. They're under what, um, had been budgeted for it. So we did come in under budget on it. There were proposals, not bids, like we shouldn't say bids. There, uh, there were proposals that were left for less money. But they felt, because the trust, the, the count, the council members asked, the alderman asked, why aren't we going with the lowest cost? And they explained like, look, we think there's more savings with this firm. This firm has the experience. They did it, uh, pretty much the same job in, uh, Yorkville.
Because we said so. That's why. That's what, that's basically what they said in a nice way.
They can't bash the other firms. I mean, no, I'm sure the other firms are okay. So they're not going to bash them, but they felt this was the best firm for this project and.
That poor guy that goes up there and it's got to answer the questions. He's like Caleb. He's like Caleb with.
Doesn't have an offensive line to back it, to, to protect them. You know, the mayor, the mayor made, Mayor Tac made a very good point on this that, um, he feels and they feel that this firm will end up saving them more money than the other firms. So I don't know. I mean, look, they, they have.
But what I'm saying is it's like.
They've done this. This isn't their first rodeo, taking a, a building, a commercial building and turning it into a police station. They did the exact same thing in Yorkville, um, recently. So, and Yorkville's about a little bit bigger than Lake Forest, but a comparable community to that. So I, I think that was a key to that was that they, um, they had experience with this. Anybody can build a new building. I mean, not anybody, you and I couldn't.
You got all these bids, but they're saying, why didn't you pick the lowest one? It's, well, it's our job to make the choice. We made the choice versus going through the explanation the dude made. He's quivering when he, when you're in sales, you got to define your position. And when you're, when you're quiver, I want to say quivering, but when you're nervous saying a number that you don't believe in it, I pick up on that. That's my problem. That's.
All right. Well, but I think that, I think the mayor explained it pretty well and he didn't seem too nervous. So.
Well, he didn't have his mic on.
He did? Oh, he didn't? Oh, I, I was in the room, so I didn't catch it. They gotta work on the mics. They, somebody, gotta get them, make sure that when anybody speaks in that meeting, they are miked because yeah, everybody in the room can hear you, but there's a heck of a lot more people watching at home, uh, either live or recording.
Don't hit the button to turn it on. How about this? You know, I would agree to a tax increase for an extra fifty bucks to do the mics that can pick up the voice automatically.
Tax.
It's like on, off.
So what do you got to do? You got to turn your mic on and wait like thirty seconds for it to warm up? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is you can have a mic, whether it's a leveler mic, whoever the AV guy is, you know, behind, if somebody's going to say something, then they should at least have them turn it on or whatever. Cause you got the, the aldermen are sitting back like this and the mic's off and you're at home.
Fair point. No, because when I watched the recording of, of Chief Burke's, uh, welcome speech, uh, a couple of weeks ago, because I didn't, I didn't get there in time to see it in person. Um, I watched the recording on YouTube and couldn't hear him. So it's a good, it's a valid, well, hey, when you're done during the day, you go to Halas Hall and help with the offensive line for the.
Okay.
And at night you go to city hall and you help with the mic system. You get a little Lake Forest Podcast, uh, your vest on and you help there.
I'll get my camera drone to find out where Trump is.
What's that?
I'll get my camera drone to find out where Trump is to help him.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're all about helping people. You're like, what was, what did Wally Phillips used to say? People helping people? That's you.
I wonder what percentage of the population that's listening to this could get that reference.
Wally Phillips.
Cause you were like six when Wally Phillips.
Parents listened every morning to Wally Phillips.
Whatever. Well, this is, this is what you get for a slow news week.
I met Bob Collins later on. He was a nice guy before he unfortunately died in the plane crash, I believe, here in Lake County.
That's nice to, way to end this show on a high note.
Well, uh, but go, everyone, okay, this show airs Saturday morning, so we won't know the results of the Zion game, but next weekend, the, the, the weekend after this show airs is homecoming at Lake Forest. Come on out and support this great team. This is, um, these guys are undefeated. Um, they beat a team that they hadn't beaten in ten years, and I think they are hitting it on all cylinders right now. So let's come on out and support our scouts.
Joe, well said. Hope everybody's having a great weekend. This is the best we can do for a slow.
And come to Bagpipes and Bonfire the following, the next day.
Um, let's reach out to those guys. Sam, come on.
I'll try to reach out to Openland, see if we can get them on. Uh, Ryan, I believe is the.
I, I've heard there's a lot of people complaining about the things being burned out there and the pollution.
I live as close to it as anyone. I could care less.
See?
Keeps my house warm.
This is what happens.
I want the beers practicing twenty-four seven by my house with music. I want a cell tower in my backyard and I want the bonfire burning across the street from me. I am, bring it on. I am not a NIMBY.
Put Bajent in as quarterback.
But Pete Jansen's in his old line.
Oh, yeah. I'll just lay down and they'll run around me. Bye.
The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners and businesses just like you. Michelle Parnell has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at eight four seven five two eight eight seven two one, eight four seven five two eight eight seven two one. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Illiot Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluffs owner Rich Rusich. They are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard to find small batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gongier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info at illiotgrow.com. Larice and Company CPAs founded in two thousand and ten by Lake Forest's own Brian Larice specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review and file. For a free quote, visit laricecpa.com now. That's L-A-R-I-S-E-Y-C-P-A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community, the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at seven seven five North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. In a relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall wellbeing. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at two two four seven six eight eight zero two eight. Or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Otto, John C., Helen, Eric and J M.